Order at 6:00 PM. Florence with MGL Chapter 30A must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk or provide his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made a part of the record of the meeting in the original or copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding the document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts and simulation, video presentations and the like, as well as letters and written material. Okay, 6:00 PM. Salmar Realty LLC special permit. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a hearing to consider a special permit for the reconfiguration of a drive-through and parking lot at 133 Westfield Street in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. The applicant and owner is Salmar Realty LLC of Ludlow, Mass., continued from August 4th, 2021. Can I own both of them? No, we gotta wait. Never mind. Let's just wait till... All right. So Levecq got the floor. Obviously, everybody here has heard the spiel, so give us the 10-cent overview and then if there's questions, we'll throw them out there. But, you know, I don't personally don't think you need to go through the whole thing for the fourth time.
Thank you, Planning Board members, Mr. Chairman. Rob Levecq, Marlevec Associates, representing Salmar Realty. We are resubmit, we have resubmitted the site plan application for 1333 Westfield Street. This is essentially the same application that came in a few years ago. We looked closely at it and we are hoping that it meets with the board's approval. Essentially, it is the same application, same design, which allows a significant amount of stacking that continues to be an issue for this location. We understand it's not perfect, but we do have very limited options other than this on the site of the subject property. We did explore endeavors with a neighbor which didn't come to fruition, unfortunately. However, we did, so this is really, I'm gonna say, the third go-round at this, so we would like to see if we can put this into place. We really think, feel strongly that this will help significantly to the tune of, you know, 18 to 20 stacking spaces as opposed to about three which we have now. We were asked to look at this. Mayor Reichelt has been very aware of the situation and wants, you know, has heard from a lot of folks, and he did ask me if we would communicate with the proponent, which I did, and they were willing to revisit this. So, we appreciate his asking and we appreciate your consideration on this tonight. Thank you.
A few things, then we'll start firing out questions. Again, for myself, very aware that it isn't an ideal situation, that this was a new project. I don't think we would be moving forward in this manner, but any kind of improvement is a plus in our book. That's my opinion. And there has been some history with water on a neighbor's yard.
Yes.
My assumption is that's not a problem anymore because we haven't heard anything. No one showed up at none of the last three meetings. I would assume someone would've came to the meeting or wrote letters or whatever, but just to be clear, there will be something, I would hope, in the conditions that will state if there is still an issue with water or none be created moving forward.
If I could speak to that for a second.
Go ahead.
I don't know that that has been resolved. I'm guessing that it has not been resolved. It's a pretty simple thing when they're out on site. I think through the communication with the site contractor and the owner, it had been discussed multiple times. I don't want to speak to that myself because I don't want to tell the planning board one thing and then something doesn't happen right. But I think a condition is appropriate. It's certainly a simple solution. It's really just a little area that needs to be graded. Pretty simple.
Yeah.
So, so I apologize that I don't believe that has been taken care of, but I did have a conversation with Mr. Martins, who, you know, is committed to doing this, and I don't know when the timing exactly will be. I know there's a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, operationally, post-COVID, COVID, new COVID, old COVID. So, thus the masks, right? So, that said, I can speak to the fact that he wants to do this. I don't know exactly when it will happen, but I would assume when the site contractor's there. That's the most logical time. They're mobilized, get it done, probably a few hours' worth of work, and then, to the extent Ms. Crotty is available, I can communicate with her to make sure that she's satisfied with the solution.
Good. Like I said, I mean, I, all three times I went out there, I wa, it's not a huge problem.
Yeah.
It is an issue with water.
What does that, yeah?
But I don't think it's a big deal.
Right.
But I would've hoped someone would've came or at least sent a letter. Maybe they did. I'll ask Allison in a minute, but definitely gonna want something on there.
Yes.
That you guys are aware that there is an issue moving forward. Allison, is there any, I guess, before we go back to the board? Anything from the town or neighbors?
The neighbor is ill, is not well, so her silence I would not take for anything other than she's not able to communicate for herself.
If a family member is available and they would like, you know, through whatever channels, we'd be happy to communicate.
I mean, again, in the past, she never, it was always relatives of hers.
Right.
And her attorney, so again, hopefully, they're watching or they'll see it and speak up, but I would've hoped they would've been here. Unfortunately, they're not.
We would, the only, the only thing I would say is we would likely need permission to go on her property, so to the extent that the condition can be written that if, for some reason, she's not available, you know, that we're willing to resolve it, but if, you know, if we can't get on or get permission to get on, it's not a big deal to get on. It wouldn't be a lot of disturbance, but I don't want to legally say, oh, we're gonna go on it if we can't, you know, if she's not available to tell us we're okay.
Somebody's gotta give you permission.
Yeah, exactly.
Jay? Yeah. For clarification, this came up privately with one of the family members discussing this project. This may even be the same thing. I'm not really sure. It had something to do with water and I think a fence or something being damaged due to water. Is that the same thing that we're talking about?
It might be, but I don't know if it was a fence, or at least what I know is Linda actually showed me she had some water intrusion. Linda Crotty, by the way, the neighbor.
Or maybe garage, I might.
The garage is where.
Okay, garage.
So, on the, excuse me, on the side of the garage here, there's just an area that's graded kind of back towards the garage. Doesn't need to be that way. It's an easy solution to just grade it back so it's positive drainage away from the garage and then done.
Got it.
If, for some reason, we get, you know, they get in there and they want to put a little membrane or something along the outside of the concrete block, I guess the concrete block was made on-site about 100 years ago or whatever, so it's kind of a cool garage, but that's what, that's what I know of. There may be some fence damage or something, which that's easy to, if there is, you know, if you communicate that, that would be logical to handle as well.
Couple, the time I went out there, met with her, it was the corner of the garage.
It was, not, now that we're talking about that.
And it was really an easy fix at that point. It was grading, but I don't know how, much worse it's got.
Sue? Hi, I have a couple of questions, because I am concerned about the water.
Yeah.
Only because, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but when we had the meeting, one time when there was other people there here that was vocal, they said that that wasn't supposed to happen, that there was supposed to be some kind of drainage that was not done, that was supposed to be done.
You would like me to speak to that?
Correct.
No, I don't know what was said, but I can tell you.
It was during one of our meetings.
Yeah. So, what, so it's not the, so all of the drainage that was.
Well, the water, yeah, the water going down.
Yeah, I can kind of, with my paper, explain it. So, if, so if this is the edge of the garage, right? What's, what's going on is the land adjacent to it is graded kind of back, just, just directly adjacent to it. So, all of the parking lot, all of the catch basins, all of the drainage design is, as proposed, was installed and is functioning. However, adjacent to it, basically from the outside of the curb of the paved area to the garage is probably, let's say it's rough and tough, 12 feet or something like that, right? So, there's this area that's graded back towards the side of the garage, so if this is your side of the garage, so it kind of runs back and then it just, because of the concrete block in between the concrete block is porous, it's coming, it looks like it's just slowly intruding into the garage, so there's like a wet area, and in the winter months, you know, Linda had said, hey, look, you know, I can slip on this, this is a problem. So, we recognize that. So, it's about a 12-foot area that it just really needs to be regraded a little bit so that it then flows when it comes down on it, because nothing from the parking lot's going that way. It's what lands there and then, in a winter, you know, in winter conditions, if it's frozen grounds or some, ground or something, it run, it appears to run back. So, it's just a regrading issue, which if they have the machines out there, it's a piece of cake. My guess is why it wasn't done is they were never mobilizing in any way, shape or form for this project. There was some discussion that that was going to happen regardless of that.
Because if my memory, I thought it was supposed to happen.
Absolutely, and I actually, I was here and said that two or three times.
Yeah, you did.
I was told, I was, and I was told two or three times that it was going to happen.
And it didn't.
So, all I'm saying this evening is that I'm not gonna speak to that happening. I recommend it be a condition, and I don't think it's, you know, malintent on the half of the, on behalf of the proponent. It's just, it just didn't happen, didn't get coordinated. The contractor, when he thought he was gonna be able to get there, didn't get there, was busy. So, it's one of those things, so it needs to happen. If I had big yellow equipment, I would do it.
Because if I remember correctly, it wasn't just a corner. Her wheels were frozen to the inside of the garage from the water draining down. That's what, Frank, that's what they said.
I don't remember hearing that.
So, it was more than just a corner.
Again, I physically, I physically went over there. The garage is 100 years old, so the mortar's coming out of the blocks, and again, there's no water from Dunkin' Donuts property going on her property, none. It's all from her property. The problem is now Dunkin' Donuts is up higher than it was before, so the water can't run away from her property onto Dunkin' Donuts property. Where it used to go before was from her property onto Dunkin' Donuts property. Now that it's ra, Dunkin' Donuts is raised up and the driver goes down, there's a berm there, the water has no place to go except stay against her garage.
Right.
So, in theory, or I don't even know if it's theory, in fact, the water is not coming from Dunkin' Donuts property. It just happened to not be able to drain off her property now because they.
Because of the way it was done, right?
Well, once, once they built the place.
I've got another follow-up question.
Sure.
Now, where all the trees are in the back, I can't, I don't have my glasses on, is that where they're gonna put the snow? If I remember correctly, the last time you were here, they're gonna push the snow way in the back where they.
Yeah. If you can see to my left here, so this is the drive-through lane, right? And it's gonna snake around now and provide all that stacking, but way back over here, actually behind the insurance company.
TP Daily.
Yeah. There's an area here where required under the stormwater management standards to provide a place that that can melt and then would go in.
And not drain into their parking lot, because that was a concern with me too.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
Perfect.
Yep. Not to say that if it's done erroneously that it, it's probably possible.
Do you think a fence would be better there to stop the drainage than the trees? Or I, I can't.
I don't know that we have trees there.
I think it's abrevieties.
I think we do have, we put a fence there.
Oh, you do also? Awesome. I don't see it here.
There, there is a proposed 6-foot vinyl stocking fence that goes around that section marked on the plan. I don't see the abrevieties though, and I am trying to.
We're on C4.
You're on C4? Oh, my God, I'm on the wrong page.
Yeah, there's a lot of sheets to it, and there's also C7, which does show the plantings, so it looks to me like there's kind of a double barrier, so to speak.
Okay, perfect.
And the idea is that they won't kill their own plants, hopefully. But yeah, so there's, there's an ample area there, you know, I think that'll, it's probably just rough and tough, about 25 feet before you get to the trees, maybe 20 to 25 feet.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob? Could you just explain where the parking, well, let me ask you this. Anybody who wants to drive into the Dunkin' Donuts and park their car, where's the access to the parking lot, which seems to be on the other side of the building? How's that gonna work now?
Okay, so we're, good question. Can you guys see this okay? I don't know. Do we, is there a way to project the plan?
I mean, we all got that.
Is that worth doing, or?
Yeah, what, I'm on C4, you're on C4 as well?
Yeah.
Just tell us what page you're on. We should be.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, she got.
Yeah, okay, oh, awesome, thank you. So, C4, so, and I'm going to do my, do you have a, can I take this off?
I think on C4, the bypass lane just sort of is covered up by something else, or you.
All right, so, okay, so you can see this.
It's actually two lanes that go around, correct?
Picture pages now, yeah. Yes, there are. So, what's happening, Bev, is on the, the existing entrance will remain, okay? And what we're doing is we're adding a double-laned drive-through access, we'll call it. So, that's gonna have the drive-through lane and a bypass lane. The success we've really had at a lot of these Dunkins over the last 10 years is when we can separate the drive-through from the parking. So, what will happen is this parking area will remain, but it won't be clogged like you see it every morning with all those cars coming, you know, it still might be a little clogged for people driving and, you know, backing up to get into the and out of the parking, however, the drive-through lane won't. So, you, that's what's causing that, that significant backup, sorry, Jay, go ahead.
So, I see the, the dotted line crossing there.
Yep.
If you pull into park in that lot, can you merge with that?
Yes, so, yeah, so let me go through it. What I'll do is I'll work my way back from the, from the pickup window, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, here's the pickup window, okay? So, approximately, I think it's six, one, two, three, four, five, six spaces with a do-not-block-the-box area so that people can get through. There will be, you know, so essentially five cars back, but six spaces back, there will be the kiosk to order, okay? And then from there, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, arguably 14, we didn't show a car there. So, 14 parking, 14 stacking spaces over the three that we have now, and even the three that we have now, or three to four that we have now, those are in direct conflict with the parking area that exists. So, this is gonna completely separate the drive-through traffic from anybody that wants to park. The short answer is yes, they can if they pull in here and this isn't stacked, they could merge in. So, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, absolutely. You could, they would have both options, both counterclockwise one way, obviously, so they're not, you know, I take that, take that back. This one they can still get out of, but this is one way in.
If, sorry, if, if they're going in the new lane there, they're in the left lane, and then they decide they want to go into the parking lot, they could turn left and go into that parking lot from that lane also, correct?
Correct, yes, so if, yes, so, and that's one of the things that they're always asking for, is as many options, as many safe options as possible to make their experience good. So, they can go back this way if they want and get out. They can go this way and get in if there's not stacking beyond that, that spot. So, prob, probably, what did I say, six plus, so 18, roughly 18 spaces, you know, if there's 18 cars, they could still pull in this way if there's more.
I mean, if they, if they want to get to that other parking lot, they can use the bypass lane and go all the way around.
Right, right.
Right, that's what I was looking for.
And we also, I believe, are adjusting the exit, which is gonna help people get out, which is also another factor. So, initially, in our planning, in working with the planning department years ago, there was the idea that necking down the entrance would, would be a little bit safer, but from a functional standpoint, if people are going eastbound and they're waiting for all the cars trying to take the left turn, which is the hardest movement, you know, so that, that can be a choke point. So, what we've done is we've added that lane, so now people can get out east, so most of the traffic's going eastbound in the morning realistically. So, that will allow that choke point to be relieved, which also could back up. So, we're leaving it here, we're adding all the stacking. I actually think from the ones that we've done, and we've done probably, I don't know, at least 20 in the last 10 years or more, probably, this, this one's gonna, this is gonna really help. I mean, compared to what we have there, there's, we're going from essentially no, almost no functional stacking some, at some points, to a lot that's separated. And the separation is, in my opinion, a huge, a huge advantage. So, the parking that you asked about, Bev, so there's four spaces here that will remain.
Yeah.
There's two right across, so total of six in here, that kind of is in the same area that you know about now. And then back behind will, you know, any employees or, you know, keep them back here, and then there's another eight over here. So, for those folks that, you know, might have time to have a coffee and hang out in there, you know, they'll have, they'll have a reasonable amount of spaces. Everybody else, again, especially with COVID and everything else, it's kind of changed the dri, a lot more drive-through traffic even, even after, post-COVID and new COVID.
Right.
Jay? I'm gonna preface my next comment with a thank you to the applicant for bringing this back in front of us, because I love, the plan's not perfect, to your point, to echo you, but it's, it's incredible what this is gonna do to relieve that, that problem that we have there, all the way around. I like, I like the two routes, I like the exit strategy improvements there. My, my concern, and I don't know that it's a real big one, it certainly won't change my vote, I'm enthusiastically in favor of this, but the dotted line there where they do merge, I could sort of see the potential for two Q spots in that section, which maybe, you know, I wish we had some numbers to work with, like what are they anticipating for Q and how to, how to metric that, other than it typically goes down Route 20 and we don't know how far, for how far.
So, what I've, and we've done a lot of this, we just had a, a couple tough Dunkin' permitting processes that we've gone through, one in East Hampton and one in Holyoke. East Hampton got approved, Holyoke got denied. We did a lot of work and it really, anything over 12 spaces, especially with a drive-through that's separated, functions pretty darn well unless there's an operational issue. And that's not to say that, you know, you have a soccer tournament up the street, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get eight million soccer moms getting munchkins, but aside from that, those generally, the stores that have that generally function. Those stores that have problems with stacking out, out of the entry, for example, in North Hampton Street and Holyoke, that's because we don't have the separation for the drive-through. It was a best-eaten donut, got converted to a Dunkin', they didn't have the space to do that, so the separation is huge. If you, if you've been on Boston Road in Wilberham, we separated that a while back, so that really helps. We've done it in Westfield for the Sardina family as well, so I'm, I gotta tell you, it isn't, it won't be perfect, but if I had to say it's gonna be a couple hundred times better, I don't think I'm exaggerating, than what we have for stacking right now.
Bev? Rob, the, I noticed that you pushed the entrance back for the stacking area. The traffic that's heading towards Westfield now, is, does that cross over, I, I don't think there's an island, obviously, there wouldn't be an island there, but is there some kind of a, a large divider between the two lanes of traffic that head towards Westfield and the other that's heading back towards the center of West Springfield? Is there, is there some marking there?
There's marking, I believe. I'm not aware of a divider. I don't know if anybody has access to Google Earth.
I don't, I don't mean an island, but is, is there a divider there?
It's just painted lines.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
I don't even think there's rumble stones there.
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I do believe there is striping there, and there is a median off the side for, for the parking for TP Daily.
Yep.
Go ahead, Sue.
With you moving that back, when you go around that corner.
Yeah.
You know what I'm gonna have.
Good question.
It's like two lanes, and then all of a sudden it goes to one.
Yeah.
I hope the entrance isn't where those two, still at the two lanes, because then I can see issues.
So, the, the new entrance to the drive-through is approximately, let's just say it's 20 feet from, so from, actually, it's right here. So, from this entrance.
Okay.
We're about 30 feet, I'm sorry, I was wrong, 30 feet to the new entrance, and that's, let's say that's about 18 feet to 20 feet wide at the throat. So, what, what happens is as you go around that corner from a site distance standpoint, yeah, we are a little bit farther along on that curve, but as you're farther along on the curve, the site distance is just kind of adjusted because the curve is, you know, as you go with the curve, it's getting adjusted, so I'm.
Is it already at one lane where the entrance is, or is that where the two lanes?
The.
When you go around the curve, it's two lanes, and then all of a sudden it merges into one lane?
So, I don't, it's two here, and then I, it looks like, you know, just based on width, because I don't have that stripe on this plan, but it looks to me like it merges.
So, it's in the two-lane area?
Yeah, yes, I would.
It, it's, it's not a good.
It's at the transition.
It's not the best situation.
Yeah.
It's that whole area there is.
I understand that, but I have questions, and I feel that I should be able to ask them freely, so, just curious.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and it's kind of at the transition realistically. I mean, it's right, right in that area.
Perfect.
That's where we're, we're all merging.
Yeah, I'm just curious where it was at. Thank you.
I think, I think you could kind of see it if you look on the bottom of the plan, that the extra island, the markers down there, you could kind of picture it with that.
Yeah, actually, that would help you, Sue, the, or, just the plan. There's a, okay, thanks. There's a median here.
Almost across.
To this point, do you see that?
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, there's a median to that point, which is in front of the Crotty property, and then the rest is striping. So, through here, so it, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, right there.
Oh, okay.
Um, go ahead, Bev. Rob, the last thing I wanted to ask you was during construction, do, will they be shutting the facility down, or what, what's their plan?
I did not discuss that with them, but if, let's just think about this logically. So, I think they're, they were probably, they try to shut it down as little as possible. So, logically, I would say they would try to get the, the site done where they don't have to interrupt.
Yeah.
And then I'm thinking they're gonna bang that out in a day or so, so maybe they have a temporary closure, but I don't think it's gonna be, maybe it's a couple days. That's my guess.
Yeah, to swap from one kiosk to the other, I think.
Yeah, yep, exactly. And they'll probably be working around the clock to do that, though. But we would expect that, you know, all of this extra, I mean, there is, there's a business, you know, from a business standpoint, they're gonna be able to service a lot more folks in a much better experience, so that's also a part of it.
If they can get help.
So, good luck. Lighting, I guess, is my last and only question. I can see some markings on this plan, which I believe are light sources. I'm assuming they're non-polluting, down-firing light that'll stay on the property. I'm still on C4, I see some.
Yeah, they should be on C4 as well. I mean, just, yeah, so we have a few light poles. I, I can confirm the height for you, but they're always dark sky compliant.
Perfect.
They're typically those shoebox lights with the LED now, they, they're almost specifically directed in a spot, so even, even though that the shield's generally required, they really are almost needed because of the new LEDs, the way they shine.
Perfect, thank you.
Just, there are hours of operation, the same, I, I think they open at 4:30 AM. I'm, I know I grabbed coffee at 5:00 in the morning, but.
I have not heard of any proposed change.
Okay.
So, I think it would be the same, and I, we would certainly, if we needed to petition for a change, we could do that, but I don't, I don't think so. so.
Anything else? Allison, anything?
So there were some, um, departmental comments, which have been addressed in writing. I think you all were given a copy of these responses. Um, there is a town street light that is in the, is located where the proposed new driveway is, so that will have to be relocated. And that's one of the conditions, is that they coordinate with the town on that relocation. The Health Department did comment, as they have in the past, about, uh, the trash. And the reason I, you know, I want to bring it up, I, I realize it's in the same location, um, and I, I hope it is an improvement, but the Starbucks that was recently approved, it was, you know, we were told the trash would not be a problem, and it, it is a problem. So sometimes your eyes are not deceiving you, things are a bit, um, clunky. In this case, I see that the trash enclosure is not moving, but if you could just describe the process by which trash trucks will access the trash enclosure for the record.
Yeah, and where it is on the plan, I'm, I'm missing it here. Oh, I see, thank you.
So on sheet C4, again, the layout, what's, what's happening is, this is the new drive-through lane, so I would anticipate, and based on the discussions with Mr. Martins, the, um, the, the dumpster trucks are front, they pick up from the front, right, and they straight kind of from over the back. So they would just go a straight shot right through here. This is a hatched area, so this is not an island here. So in that, and we want folks to be able to go through here, we have a do-not-block-the-box. Obviously, it's generally in off-hours, not crazy off-hours, but probably early in the morning. And they will go direct shot, back up, and then right out. So actually, it's pretty, pretty easy. Um, to speak to the, the Starbucks, there was some discussion internally on that, whether, how that was to be figured out. So we are, um, I think we're working with Coal Dust on that as well.
Rob, deliveries to the store, I, I think they back in to the, um, the, the larger parking lot over to the left of the building. Is that typically, I can't imagine that the truck is going to be able to make that turn.
If they're not doing it now, then I would assume whatever they're doing now will not change. We're, we're, we are increasing the impervious area and providing some other options, so it's possible they would try something different. Um, but if they like what they're doing and it's not causing a problem, I would assume it's going to be the same.
Look it up, maybe?
Nope.
Well, there's nobody in the audience, so, Rob, you want to speak as a citizen?
I'm in favor.
I guess that's it. And we got site plan review, which we can do after we-
I, I do have, I, I think what he's saying with the grading, just include it in the condition, are we going to?
Well-
As the plans are drawn, it should not be a problem if it's built according to the plans.
Entertain a motion to close?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, closed.
We have not opened the site plan review yet, correct? So we're actually, yeah, okay.
Correct, so we're only voting on the special permit at this point.
All right, thank you. Move to approve the special permit for the expansion and reconfiguration of the coffee shop drive-through at 1333 Westfield Street with a waiver from Section 309 dot 26 to allow for the addition of a third curb cut onto Westfield Street. In approving the waiver, the board makes the following findings. The curb cut and parking layout are in harmony with the purpose, uh, I'm losing my place here. Purpose and intent of the parking ordinance, there will be adequate off-street parking to serve the coffee shop. The additional curb cut will not create or add to an unsafe traffic situation, and the proposed layout and landscaping are in conformity with all applicable zoning ordinances. Let's see, are these standard conditions or conditions to be written to the record?
Uh, the conditions are attached to the site plan review, um, so the, the special permit, I didn't propose any conditions.
Got it, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, special permit approved. 605 Salmarility LLC Site Plan Review. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a hearing to consider a site plan review for the reconfiguration of a drive-through and parking layout at 1333 Westfield Street in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. The applicant and owner is Salmarility LLC of Ludlow, Mass., continued from August 4th. Obviously, there's nothing else to add, but, correct?
Correct.
All right, uh, motion to close the site plan review?
Second.
Any discussion? None? Go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, closed.
Move to announce the site plan, uh, to approve the site plan for the reconfiguration of the drive-through and parking areas at 1, uh, 1333 Westfield Street, subject to 16 standard conditions and one special condition, that removal and resetting of the town street light located within the limits of the proposed western curb cut shall be coordinated with the Town Department of West, uh, Public Works and Central Maintenance Department.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I don't know if you want to just put it on record that we expect the, the drainage onto the neighboring property to be resolved. It is addressed in the standard conditions, but I feel like it's good to-
I would, I would make a, make a comment to that.
How, how should I, how should I phrase that? I, uh, because really, there, there's two pieces, right? We want to maintain that the water not change on the abutting property, and we want the garage situation addressed, correct?
Well, I, I think part of what they, they're going to do is actually just grade it so the garage situation is-
Would be taken care of.
Right. And it's, it's part of the standard condition, but since they brought it up as like an issue to be addressed, we're sort of including it as a condition.
Say, along with the standard grading condition-
Do I have to say it if we're all saying the same thing on record?
Let's just all get on the same page about the verbiage, so that I can write it up appropriately.
Do you have a suggestion, Allison, to make it clean?
Uh, uh, condition that the site grading be such that no drainage leaves the property and that any existing drainage issues be resolved.
So moved?
Could I speak to that, Mr. Chairman? Sorry. Just, just because I, when you say no drainage leaves the property, there's just pre-existing conditions. So I think, not to be nitpicky, but I just don't want, you know, somebody to come back and say, oh, you, you know, we have, we have drainage that goes into the wetland and goes, leaves the property, and, you know, so.
So the standard condition is that, uh, drainage off-site shall not be increased.
Where's, do you know what your condition that is, Allison, and I'll modify it? We, uh, let me speed read. 12, thank you.
Right. And that makes perfect sense. That's impressive.
So to reaffirm for the record, 12, the standard condition is the lot shall not be developed, regraded, or altered in any manner that will increase surface water drainage to abutting streets or properties.
And to add that, the existing drainage issue with the karate property be resolved.
All right, and to resolve the existing issue to the abutting property.
Good with those conditions?
That's great, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
You have to second, everybody second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping to conclusions here. Now, is there any discussion? No discussion? Now we'll go to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved.
Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate it. And hey, if it doesn't work, we can just drive go-karts around the back, right? Sign me up.
You do that off-hours, right? All right.
Um, I'm sorry, Rob, before you leave, the, the next item is the continuation for the 499 Riverdale. I did have a question about that, so I just want to make sure you stick around.
All right, minutes?
Move to accept the minutes of meeting August 18th, 2021?
Second.
I wasn't here, right?
No.
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, one. Okay, go ahead, Allison, what else we got?
So we have a request for continuation for 499 Riverdale Street, which is the Subaru. And the request is, it was approved on September 5th, 2019, and the requirement is that the project be completed within two years. Um, the request is based upon, uh, COVID-19 delays and to extend that approval until September 5th of 2023. So that's an additional two years. Rob, I just wanted to clarify that you were asking that that was not a typo, that you do indeed want two-year, a two-year extension as opposed to a one-year.
If possible, yes, thank you.
I don't have any problem with that.
Anybody? You got to move for a vote?
You do, yep. So it would be a motion to extend the site plan review approval for 499 Riverdale Street until September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, extended. Now you can leave.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
All right, anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Good night, West Springfield.